And we're now on item seven, public hearings. City Clerk.
Okay, I've been preparing for this. Item 7A, hold a public hearing, waive first reading and introduce an ordinance to make amendments to San Bruno Municipal Code Title 12, Land Use, Article 3, Zoning, to amend Chapter 12.76, Title, Purpose, etc., Chapter 12.80, Definitions, Chapter 12.84, General Provisions, Conditions and Exceptions, Chapter 12.88, Condominiums, Chapter 12.92, Non-Conforming Lots, Structures and Uses, Chapter 12.96, Establishment and Description of Districts, Chapter 12.100, Off-Street Parking and Loading, Chapter 12.108, Architectural Review Permits, Chapter 12.132, Public Hearing, and Chapter 12.230, Affordable Housing Program. To rescind Chapter 12.128, Time Limit Renewal and Revocation of Architectural Review Permit, Use Permit, Planned Unit Permit or Variance, Chapter 12.140, Appeals, and Chapter 12.150, Transportation System Management, TSM Program. To rescind and replace Chapter 12.90, Accessory Dwelling Units, and Chapter 12.250, Density Bonuses, add Chapter 12.78, Zoning Administration, and Chapter 12.280, Mixed-Use Districts into amend the zoning map.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. I appreciate it more than you know. And now I'm going to turn this over to the City Manager, as well as you can introduce who will be with us, if you mean, and presenting, and begin with the presentation.
So, good afternoon, Javon, broken City Manager. We are here for a exciting presentation, which is a long-awaited update to our zoning code. I will not do what the City Clerk just did and repeat all of the chapters that are being changed. We have, we have a significant team that has worked on this effort, and if we can go to the next slide. We have Pamela Wu, our Community and Economic Development Director, Matthew Newbaum, our associate planner, tons of work from our City Attorney, Mark Safrano, and then Kelly Biggs, a contract senior planner, who has spent countless hours, countless hours on this from Good City Company, the principal of that firm, Erin Ackman, and Barbara Couse, from Goldfarb Litman, are outside. Special Real Estate Council has also had a significant role in this. And so, this effort, as the City Council knows, is very much needed to align chapters in our zoning code to allow for more housing to be redeveloped, and there are a number of critical policy decisions that are outlined. We have structured today's presentation such that we will have the comprehensive presentation, and should the City Council get through everything today, we do not need to have tomorrow's meeting. However, we have calendar a continuation of this topic for tomorrow at 5:30. We are totally here to support you. We know that this is a comprehensive update, and many of you saw the Planning Commission presentation, and in large measure, this will be very similar. So I will be quiet right now and turn it over to Erin Ackman, the principal with Good City Company, to take us through the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Erin Ackman with Good City Company, and it's an honor to be back and for, be back in front of the San Bruno City Council once again. So in terms of tonight's agenda, I will just go over a couple of slides, and then I'll turn it over to Kelly, who did most of this work and knows this proposed amendments the best. So go over a little bit about the background, how we go to this point. This is over a decade in the making. Really, Roman numeral two here is probably the most important. There's really four buckets of policy that's included in these ordinance amendments amendments tonight. As the City Manager noted, a lot of this has to do with implementation of two important policy documents, the Transit Corridor Plan, as well as the General Plan. The second relates to state law consistency. As the Council knows, there's numerous state laws passed every single year, which mandate that cities make changes to their local code. So we'll go over some of those. C, affordable housing, one of the most pressing needs within the peninsula. This will go to address some of the affordable housing needs and set up regulation for future development related to affordable housing. And then administrative, administrative procedure clarification. That's a fancy way of saying, if you're a property owner from someone building their single-family home up to a multifamily development, what's the process that you will go through and who will be the final approval body? And of course, next steps, and perhaps the most important part, the council discussion of this ordinance amendment. Next slide, please. So the background. This started, as I mentioned, almost a dozen years ago now. In 2009, the City Council adopted the General Plan, and it was actually the first general plan that was adopted in 25 years. The one before that was the 1984 San Bruno General Plan. So there was a lot of new policy within that plan, including setting up the transit corridor area. And about four years later, the Transit Corridor Plan itself was adopted. The Council held numerous study sessions, but the code was not yet adopted because of the fact that we still hadn't go through the Measure N process. And then Measure N was passed in 2014, which allowed height increases, height increases, as well as other density increases in specific areas of San Bruno. 2016, there was a walking tour. Really, we kicked off the code revisions that relate to housing and relate to development in February of 2020, when the Council, one year ago, adopted a new parking chapter. And as the Council knows, parking is an important component, because it really does drive costs, in particular, related to housing, and is often the biggest obstacle to producing new housing. August 20, August of 2020 was the first study session related to the housing-focused zoning update that you're hearing tonight. And finally, in February, a couple weeks ago, the Planning Commission reviewed these ordinance. We had a great discussion, and a summary of that discussion can be found in pages 328 to 330 of the packet, also known as pages 6 to 8 of the staff report. So, next slide, please. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Kelly to give you all the details.
Thank you, Erin, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. This slide shows you some of the major changes that are proposed to the zoning code through this ordinance. ADUs, density bonuses, condos, architectural review permits, affordable housing, general administration for zoning, and a new mixed-use district are all included in these amendments. So we are really centering on housing here, as Erin noted, both in that we're making more land available for multifamily housing, and then also strengthening affordable housing requirements themselves, in addition to clarifications to administrative procedures to facilitate the processing of these applications. A more detailed version of this table can be found in Attachment 3 to the staff report on this topic, and that should be on page 505 of your packet. So I'll start with an overview of how the ordinance implements the TCP, the housing element, and the general plan. So through the addition of Chapter 12.280, the ordinance codifies the zones identified by the Transit Corridor Plan, creating five new zoning districts, outlining new permitted and conditionally permitted uses, and setting forth development standards and design standards to encourage high-quality pedestrian-oriented design and land uses. One of the big changes for this area is that multifamily residential uses will become permitted throughout these zones, whereas right now it's only permitted in the CBD currently. Retail restaurants and other active pedestrian-oriented land uses will also be permitted throughout these zones. So moving just south of the TCP area, this slide shows the multi-use residential focus area, which is part of the general plan implementation effort. The rezoning of this area is also identified by Housing Element Program 2A, and this zone emphasizes multifamily housing and new development projects, and permitted uses include multifamily housing, restaurants, personal and business services, hotels and offices. One change is that new retail uses are only conditionally allowed, and that's really to ensure that those kinds of activities are concentrated further north in the existing retail districts. So this slide shows the existing zoning map. The area within the heavy black outline shows the TCP area, and then the dark red outline to the south is that general plan multi-use focus residential area. You can see the existing CBD area here, and this red hatched, and then the darker red area, this is the commercial districts through here, and then this lighter red along here is the neighborhood commercial designation, and those are the districts that will really be seeing the biggest changes, so I'm just putting this out here. So now you can see the new zoning districts, which correspond to the TCP and the general plan maps we've looked at in the previous slides. The CBD district is shown in dark red right here, and that will continue to support a vibrant downtown destination for residents, workers and visitors. The TOD Station Office area, shown here in bright red, and that accommodates more high-intensity residential office and retail centered around the Caltrans station and Caltrain Station. The medium-density mixed-use district, the TOD 1 area, is shown in orange, running along San Bruno Avenue here in Huntington to the north. That allows for a mixture of pedestrian land-oriented uses along those transit corridors, including housing. And then high-density mixed-use district, which is TOD 2, this bright purple, runs along Alcomina Real, as you can see, also allowing for higher intensity residential and commercial land uses. And then the Civic Center, which is located in the dark purple, that's where everybody knows City Hall and Library and the fire station are all located, and that allows for civic uses. That MXR district that we talked about, located here in purple, or sorry, in pink, and then you've also noticed that a number of parcels will retain their PD zoning, and the reason is that those PD zones were developed recently in order to permit often housing, and those are designed already to be consistent with the TCP. All right, moving on to the next slide. So this just shows you the amount of land that we're newly permitting multifamily uses in. So everything in that yellow hatched pattern will newly allow multifamily housing, so it is a significant portion of the city. The statistics behind that hatched area include 382 parcels, which adds up to 74 acres of land that will now permit multifamily housing. So that should allow developers to proceed with applications with a predictable entitlement path in mind without legislative changes like a PD zone, and it should also allow the city to implement the housing element. Of course, any application is subject to the development standards and to review by the appropriate review body, depending on the size of the project. The next objective for this ordinance is to achieve consistency with state law and land use regulation, and that most specifically relates to the city's accessory dwelling unit chapter, as well as to the density bonus chapter. So I'll just start with a little bit of background to talk about the difference between an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit, which I realize is a new term to many. So an ADU can be within attached or detached from a primary single-family or multifamily residence. It has to include both a kitchen and a bathroom. And then a junior ADU has to be completely within a single-family residence and must include an efficiency kitchen, but it can share those sanitation facilities or bathrooms with single-family dwelling unit. Junior ADU can only be within an existing single-family, whereas the ADU can be either within multifamily or within single-family. So as Council may be aware, six new laws went into effect in 2020, which limit the city's discretion pretty severely in regulating ADUs and junior ADUs. So ADUs and JDUs have to be processed ministerially, meaning no discretionary review is allowed. They have to be allowed in all residential and mixed-use zones, the ADUs that is, and then the junior ADUs have to be allowed in single-family zones. An 800-square-foot ADU must be allowed regardless of existing floor area and lot coverage for the project site. The ADUs are now allowed in multifamily structures, either within the existing building area or detached. Setback requirements were reduced to four feet for the side and rear, and the height maximum must be a minimum of 16 feet, so that's what the city has to allow. Maximum floor areas cannot be less than 850 square feet for studios and one bedrooms, or less than 1,000 square feet for more than one bedroom. So there are some limited areas where the city has discretion, and those include the following topics. So as I mentioned, you have to allow at least 16 feet in height, but you can establish a higher height limit and allow a second story. The ordinance before you tonight does allow a second story, which is consistent with the existing city regulations, which allow two-story ADUs, but the second story must meet the underlying district setback standards and meet residential design guidelines, daylight plan and articulation requirements. The city can also choose to allow a higher square footage maximum than what's suggested by state law, and this ordinance does include a provision for large lots that are greater than 7,500 square feet, that allows up to 1,200 square feet for the ADU. The city may require replacement parking for junior ADUs. We cannot require it for accessory dwelling units, and that's when a garage is converted. So garage could be converted to either an ADU or a junior ADU. The new ordinance does require that junior ADU replacement parking is provided. The ordinance is also able to, and does have requirements for placement of balconies and window openings to be sensitive to privacy issues, and it also has architectural compatibility requirements. Lastly, due to the way that the city's development standards are structured in residential districts, the city could require conditional use permits for ADUs that exceed 800 square feet and exceed permitted floor area and lot coverage. However, to streamline ADU production, the ordinance does not require that, but it does require that the ADU meet the maximum size requirements that are laid out by state law. So moving on to the next topic for state law consistency, this is the density bonus. So the state density bonus gives projects with affordable housing components access to a bonus over the allowed residential density, as well as access to waivers and incentives to make the project feasible. Recently, state law has increased the available density bonus from 35% to 50% for projects with an affordable housing component of a certain size, and then has also increased the density bonus to 80% for projects that are 100% affordable. Projects within a half-mile transit have even more flexibility on this. This is one of those topics that the city has very limited discretion over, but the new density bonus chapter does set forth clear application requirements, timing and procedures. It sets for the maximum allowable density, residential density definition, which helps the city to calculate the density bonus. And then lastly, the chapter also includes references to state law for the available bonus relative to the amount and depth of the affordability provided, and that's really to help the chapter to continue to be consistent with state law throughout future cycles, as this seems to be changing really annually at this point. The next objective of the ordinance is to update the affordable housing chapter. So to provide context for this update, this slide shows the city's progress on the regional housing needs allocation as of 2019. As you can see, the city is not on pace with producing housing at any income level pursuant to RENA, and as discussed earlier, through the addition of the mixed-use district chapter, multifamily housing will now be permitted in far more areas of the city, which should help to address this deficit. But in partnership with that, in addition to increasing the quantity of land that is available for housing, the ordinance also includes changes to the affordable housing chapter to strengthen onsite inclusionary requirements. So this slide shows the requirements that are included in the current ordinance. As you can see, the affordable housing requirements kick in for projects of five or more units. Rental projects right now are required to pay a fee rather than providing that onsite affordable housing, but may elect to provide the onsite affordable housing as an alternative to paying the fee. And one of the central amendments to this chapter is to require onsite affordable housing for those rental projects. The reason for this preference for the onsite is, rather than payment of that fee, is that there's a substantial lag time for the city to collect enough funds from all of these projects to actually be able to finance an affordable housing project. So requiring this onsite affordable housing enables the city to produce housing on pace with market rate units. So this slide shows kind of a strike through showing the changes that we're making to these ratios and requirements. So as you can see, both rental and for-sale projects would continue to be required to provide 15% of units as onsite affordable housing. The rental units would be split evenly between very low, low and moderate income groups, and for-sale projects concentrated in moderate income groups at 10%, with 5% dedicated to low-income units. Developers would also continue to have access to alternatives, and these could be providing payment of an LUFI, providing offsite units, but the findings to allow those alternatives have been strengthened, and those alternatives are only approved at City Council discretion. The ordinance also includes one new alternative, and the intention of that is to target units to different income brackets in line with the city's RENA deficits. So someone could suggest more very low-income units than what's recommended here and fewer units overall, but they have to prove that they would provide the same overall subsidy. And as I mentioned, all of these alternatives would be considered approved at the City Council level. So next, we'll move on to the last objective for tonight's discussion, which includes updates to the administrative procedures. So the ordinance includes clarifications to the architectural review permit. We've developed different categories for architectural modifications and additions, as well as for new buildings with associated approval bodies. Minor alterations, like a materials change, could be approved at the director level, or more major alterations, like a complete change in the architectural style of a building could be considered by the ARC. New buildings would be considered by ARC or Planning Commission, subject to size thresholds of six units or 10,000 non-residential square feet. And then along with these changes, the Architectural Review Committee meetings will become publicly noticed hearings. If ultimately adopted by the Council, those bylaws for the ARC will be updated to formalize these committee meetings as public hearings. So some other edits have been made to the Architectural Review Permit chapter, and those are really regarding making the findings more objective, and also clarifying and modernizing the application requirements. A new zoning administration chapter has also been updated to consolidate information on zoning administration that exists throughout the code, such as application completeness and appeals. And then this chapter also adds information on things like processing a modification to an existing planning approval, the expiration periods and extensions of planning approvals, and how to process multiple entitlements with different associated review bodies. All right, so that covers the summary for tonight, just to show you what the next steps would be, depending on how Council chooses to move forward with tonight. After this public hearing, a second reading is required, and then thereafter, the second reading, the ordinance will go into effect in 30 days. So that concludes our presentation for tonight. We are happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone. With that, what I'd like to go ahead and do, because it is a public hearing, with permission from the team that has made our presentations and are getting close to 10, I'd like to give that opportunity for those folks that may wish to. So if I can, if we can open it up to the public for any comments, please.
First commenter is Shabina Jalil. Just one moment while I try to get you unmuted again.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Oh, yes, I can hear now. So is there like a size limit to the ADU unit?
Why don't you go ahead and ask all your questions, and then they can be taken down and addressed after we're concluded.
So that was my question.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Size limit to the ADU unit.
Okay. All right, we have that down. Was there anything else?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for your time and comments.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there anybody else from the public? Seeing no hands, and confirmed to clerk, I'll go ahead and ask for action to close public hearing.
I'm moved.
Is there a second, please? Thank you. Motion makes Al Azhar Hamilton to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Councilmember Mason? Is that an aye? Thank you. Thank you with a thumbs up. Okay, let's bring it back to Council for questions, please. And then also, we did have the one question from the speaker. Is there somebody on staff that can take that first question?
Can I make a suggestion that we answer the public question first?
Yeah, that's what I was just asking. Who on staff or on the team can answer that question?
I'm happy to answer that question. So the question is the size limit for ADUs. So yes, there are size limits for both junior ADUs and for ADUs. Junior ADUs are limited to 500 square feet in size, and then it's 850 square feet for a studio or one-bedroom ADU on a lot that is less than 7,500, and 1,000 square feet for a unit that contains more than one bedroom on lots that are less than 7,500 square feet. Then for lots that are greater than equal to 7,500 square feet, the floor area can go up to 1,200 square feet for the ADU.
Okay. Our director is acknowledging that that was a good answer. So the thing is too, folks may remember too, that, you know, when we did the ADUs, my memories going, it was like we, the City Council then decided 640. So the question would be, well, why? Well, state law. So the state has stepped in and increased that, so we do not have the option to say no in that respect. Okay, let's bring it to Council, please. Councilmember Mason.
Thank you, both Kelly and Erin, for the presentation. Very, very helpful. I just, I wanted to ask, so obviously I understand that we're low on our RENA scores and that we need housing, but when I look at the location of all the, of the majority of changes, I'm just thinking of, I'm looking at my notes, because I always forget what it's called, but the South Line project and the, the new project in the old movie theaters in South City, neither of which are on our, you know, San Bruno, but both of which are going to have great impacts in, on our traffic and our streets. And so I'm just wondering if that is given any consideration when, that when you looked at the zoning updates that needed to be done, and this may even be for Director Wu, I don't know, but I know South Line, when, earlier when we had spoken with them, we're anticipating 11,000 employees a day in a parking lot that was estimated to fill 6,000 spots. And that's just, it's a lot, I mean, it's a lot of, part of it is I understand the future of, you know, whatever's being planned for, for our city, but the other part of it is, I mean, how realistic is it going to be to get around the city? Our streets aren't that wide. We don't have a lot of one-way streets, so.
Pamela, did you want to take this one, or do you want me to take a shot and I could fill in if I missed anything?
I, I could. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I can take this one. Javon's just checking in to see if you want to say something, or no, go ahead. So through to Mayor, I, this is a great suggestion, Councilmember Mason. I do want to emphasize that this, the scope for this current zoning code update is focused on aligning the general plan and also TCP. It's been in the works for, like Erin said, dozens of years ago. So as, we do want to focus on how the South Line project and also other South City projects are affecting the city, maybe that maybe that will be delayed in the next phase. And that is a great suggestion. We are barely catching up to the previous housing cycle by doing the zoning code update. I'm sure there will be more zoning code update coming your way when we're preparing the next housing element, and that element will definitely be factored into the consideration.
Thank you. And so as these zoning codes are being updated, are conversations being had with other departments to ensure that the, that you know, colleagues are aware that there's gonna be a change in zoning, which is gonna impact their work? So, so that we're not approving plans, and then we're not ready for what that actually means in implementation.
As I mentioned, so the zoning code is to complement the TCP, which was adopted years ago, and also the general plan. So a lot of the projects has been reviewed by other departments against the city's general plan and also the TCP. There's really nothing new in the zoning code, other than to bring the out-of-date state code requirements, such as ADU and density bonus. We are aware that we need to talk to our counterparts, making sure the right hand is talking to the left hand. So we will, after council adopt the zoning code update, the team will be reaching out to other city departments to talk and also to let the planners know, to talk in detail what is the adopted changes.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my other question is, I did catch Kelly's comment that the ADU over 800 square feet is a discretionary determination that can be reviewed. And so can you, can you talk a little bit more about that, some benefits, some pros and cons, and what you've seen other cities do?
So Pamela, you can feel free to chime in on this too. But just to clarify the regulations, so we basically have to permit an 800 square foot ADU, no matter what, if we, if it's exceeding maximum floor area and lot coverage, we still have to permit it. If someone was to have a primary residence that either is at max floor area, max lot coverage, and then they want to develop like an 812 square foot ADU, technically, you could have discretionary review of that, so that could go to, I believe it would be the ARC. Is that right, Pamela?
That would, depending on the location, it could either be a conditional use permit for maximizing the 50%, or maximize or exceeding the lot coverage. That's sort of a discretionary review. So it would be a two-tier process. You would go to architectural review for the architectural compatibility, and then planning commission for the actual use permit.
And I think just the, the cons of, of doing that is that it's kind of an arduous process for the homeowner. And we're really talking about such a small increase in square footage. It's like, you know, 50 square feet for a one-bedroom. That I, I think staff just wouldn't necessarily recommend going forward with that.
Right, and to clarify, so what the zoning ordinance amendment proposed to do is to eliminate the discretionary review for ADUs that are exceeding the FAR, the minimum lot coverage, and this and that, so that we're streamlined the production of ADUs. We're not putting homeowners who want to add, like Kelly said, an extra 15 square feet onto their ADU through an arduous process, just because they, you know, need to, they, they can, and they want to build a slightly bigger unit.
Yeah, and, and I will say, I've heard from a number of people how difficult it has been to build an ADU in, in San Bruno. So I do understand some of this is gonna relieve that. But I, along the, I, I'm, I still am not exactly clear, and I apologize to both of you. Because I think I'm mixing, I think what I'm doing is I'm mixing different size units, because I also remember hearing you say something about 1,200 square foot unit. So is that because that has to do with that larger, like a two-bedroom? Is that what it is?
It's a, it's a larger ADU, but also has to be on a really large lot, 7,500 square foot lot. And on those lots, I really wouldn't expect that you're seeing an exceedance of a floor area or of lot coverage, just due to the size, unless they, you know, have a giant primary residence, which I don't think is common in San Bruno.
Okay, and then right before you go to Vice Mayor Medina, just one more question along the same lines of ADUs. With the ADU and the junior ADU, what is the difference in parking requirements? If any, what, and what discretion does the city have around parking?
Sure, so it's a bit complicated. The junior ADU, there's no parking required for the unit itself. But say I have a two-car garage, and I, you know, convert part of my primary residence in one space of the garage to be a junior ADU. The city can and will require you to have a replacement parking spot for that space that you've eliminated elsewhere on your lot. And that could be in a driveway. It doesn't have to be another covered spot, but we just don't want to compound the situation in single-family neighborhoods that are short on parking, where we can kind of seek some relief for that. For accessory dwelling units, in very limited instances, the city can require one space for the accessory dwelling unit. It has to be located far from transit, and transit for ADUs is defined as like a bus stop. So I would really expect very limited areas where we can require this one parking space. And you cannot require any replacement parking if you convert your garage to an accessory dwelling unit.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina, can I just ask a real quick, general one, and then have a good, thank you. Just, just really quick for, for me and the rest is, you know, how much of this is led and driven actually by the state versus the local? Okay, so just so that's really clear, because obviously, just on the ADU size, it, it doesn't matter if, if, because what we had optioned then, we went below that to try to minimize that size. But just a, a general question, then to the Vice Mayor.
Sure, yeah, it is very limited, especially with the accessory dwelling units. State law has a lot of very specific regulations about what cities can and cannot do. And really, cities have the opportunity to be more lenient in ways than state law, more permissive, but certainly not less permissive than the state law. And then for the density bonus as well, really entirely driven by state law. The changes to the zoning code to the, with the new mixed-use district are really driven entirely by existing plans, such as the TCP and the general plan, and are targeted at helping us meet those RENA allocations and fulfilling that housing element.
Thank you. And if there's something else, I'll go to the Vice Mayor, please.
Yes, I, I wanted to welcome back first Erin Acknen. It's good to see you, my former coach here in San Bruno, the San, San Bruno Giants. 20 years ago, maybe, Erin?
A while back.
Yeah, so welcome back. Thank you and Kelly for your work, and all staff for, for this work. A long time coming. So I basically, to me, it comes down to two things. There are things here that we have to do. State law, so that's really easy. Not gonna object to that, so let's go ahead and proceed and go ahead with that. Okay, those things that we have a say in, and, and there are three or four maybe in there. Like, it's, this kind of stuff is kind of hard for me to track, but I just wanted to put that out there, knowing the hour that we're at. And, and I honestly was thinking we're gonna have a lot longer presentation, and kind of go through some of the things that we had a little bit more choice in doing. But I just wanted to put that out front. I was able to ask a couple of questions to staff, and I, and I thank them for, Pamela, for, for answering them. The, the tricky one for me is this density bonus. And so they can go higher than our height limit, so we have a measure N passed for a certain area of our city in the transit corridor plan, but now south of Crystal Springs, a developer could go to five stories. And that's my understanding of it, so okay. Now, how do they, how could they do that? Do they have to follow setback requirements? Or is it pretty much, we're gonna see these boxes on, potentially on the south side of our city?
I can speak at first. Oh, Pamela, did you want to answer?
I'll, I'll take, I'll take a stab at it, and then feel free to chime in. So Vice Mayor Medina, that's a great question. If you don't mind, I'll do probably some sort of a density bonus 101. So as Kelly mentioned, density bonus is driven completely by state law. So local jurisdiction has very, very little love discretion over it. If you were a developer proposing a density bonus project, so you would have to come into the city, talking to the city staff, and saying, "I am proposing a density bonus application." And there is an application form that we're currently developing that is called the density bonus permit application. It talks about the level of affordability. So the first criteria for a density bonus is they have to add additional affordability into the project. Given the level of affordability, that decides the number of concessions or incentives that they can qualify. They would also have to outline what these are. They can be height increase, they could be a setback reduction, they could be increased density beyond city allows, or a number of different standards. Keep in mind, in the world of density bonus, there are other terminologies that are very similar. They're called the waivers, incentives, and sometimes with the planners, call them gimmicks. If you read the state, uh, state law, they actually have a different standard than the city ordinance. For instance, parking, if you're a density bonus project, you qualify for a different parking ratio than what the city would obviously allow, require you to do so, and that's what we call a gimme. But an incentive or a concession is something different, for instance, the setback on limit and, and height and things like that. However, the city can also respond to the developer based on their concession. Some are feasible and some are not feasible. So that's when the city starts to negotiate with, with the developer. So that's kind of a density bonus 101. So for instance, if a developer comes in and wanted to do a, a more denser, higher, less setback development south of Crystal Spring, they will make that proposal to us, and then we'll have to evaluate, and then start talking to the developer like that, and really looking at the level of affordability to see if they qualify for these concessions.
Right, and if they were 100% affordable, like in the presentation, then they, they would qualify for, for those gimmies or?
A, a number of concessions, and Erin and Kelly reminded me that there was actually one more state law that went into effect this year, I believe, January this 2021, that increased the amount, uh, uh, the, the amount of incentives and concessions if you're going 100% affordable.
Okay, yeah. I'm glad somebody else knows way more about that than, than, than me, but what it comes down to is, these are things that are brought on by the state. Councils can't do anything about it. So I'd like to concentrate on the things that we have a say about. And if we're gonna try to do that tonight, or we're gonna do that tomorrow, I think that would be kind of the dividing part for me, where I'm not gonna object to anything that we have to do, and that if we concentrated on the things that we could actually decide on. And, and one of them was those ADUs on, on the, the size limits and the heights, depending on the lot cover, all that stuff you were talking about. So that would make it easier for me to be able to just give you a clearer answer to. So I'll be quiet now, and I'll listen to my colleagues as they add other questions, and I'm so glad two of them were on the planning commission before, so to help us out, so appreciate that, Tom and Linda.
Councilmember Hamilton, please.
One question I wasn't gonna ask, but just hearing what, what Vice Mayor Medina was, was saying about the area south of Crystal Springs. So if somebody came in, those lots are incredibly shallow, in terms of, you know, how the, the width of the lots from El Camino till their, to their, the back border of them. So, you know, with any type of setback ordinance would make it physically impossible to build a five-story building, unless it was gonna be really weird looking. So, so are we saying that with, would it pretty much have to be a 100% affordable building in order to be able to waive the height limits and waive the setbacks and build a box?
No, so it's, and it's not exactly to build a box. Basically, for a density bonus project, they have varying levels at which they qualify, depending on if they're providing very low, low, or moderate income housing, and it's not 100% affordable. I think that it starts around like, you know, 5% very low, they can start requesting density bonus. And the reason that the waiver is in place is because, you know, I'm trying to get a density bonus, I'm building more units than what's permitted by your existing zoning, so I need more space. I need either height, I need a break in a step back, I need a break in the setback, so that part is really physical. And then the incentives and concessions are really more financially related, and those are based on how, what percentage and what depth of affordability they're providing. And those are to help the developer to be able to finance and offset the cost of the affordable units. But they can, they're also, I mean, while they are, they have to prove a financial relationship, they are also things like setback standards, parking requirements, items like that.
Okay, thank you. What I, what I was, was, planning to say was, first of all, thanks to everyone for all this work. I don't think it can be understated, the enormity of this task, as evidenced by the number of people who worked on it that, that we saw in the beginning of the slide. So this is really, and it's, as was stated earlier, this is a long time in coming. And once we can get this, get this out the door, a lot of the, a lot of the complaints that we hear about how difficult it is to do things here will be addressed, and that's, that's huge. There's a, there's a lot of very, really, really important changes here. And among the most important, I think, is that we're doing what we can to discourage the use of the INLO fee. You know, the, in, in a perfect world, we would only want to see it used in a, in a spot where building affordable housing makes no sense at all. You know, if it's way, way, way far away from transit, way, way far away from services. You know, somewhere where just, it makes no sense to build affordable housing. That's the only place I would really want to see anybody use an INLO fee. We have to do everything that we can to get the developers to actually build the units and not pay into the fee, because it's so difficult to convert those dollars into units, and it takes so, so long. So I'm really, really glad to see that the, the amount of focus on that in this, in this plan. And especially the requirement to elevate that decision to, to, to city council if people, you know, are requesting the use of the INLO fee. Because we're gonna, we're gonna hold those folks to account, why can't you build them? So I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to note that for, for members of the public who may have missed that, that nuance in all of this, how important that is. I don't have a whole lot of questions, because I've seen this already. And, and I just, just wanted to reiterate my thanks to everybody who worked on this plan.
Other, uh, Councilmember Mason.
Thank you. Mayor, this is just a question probably for Director Wu. Just listening to the idea of like just box buildings going up is a little worrisome. I think one of the charms of San Bruno is that we have so many different characters and styles of houses. And so just from my time in planning, I remember asking about architectural design guidelines. And my understanding is that typically their house is part of the zoning process. So of course, tonight, I don't, I'm not expecting to see any of that, but I am curious to know if that's somewhere where we might be headed at some point, so that we don't just have a bunch of boxes in this area?
And I hope we don't. So any new housing development greater than two, three units, they would have to go through an architectural review process. Right now, they go through the architectural review committee. In the future, in our streamlined process, they will first go to planning commission for articulation of their design. We have a very well-built, mature design guidelines stipulated in the zoning code. We don't, we discourage box design. In the TCP, there's setbacks, there's landscaping, there's front yard variation. We strive for the best design we can. I think what we're focusing on density bonus, setback and height limit is one of the concession that they can ask for, but that's only one. They're not asking to waive all of the They're not asking to waive all of the development standard, or they're not asking to waive any architectural review. So we will still want to make sure that this is a compatible product for City of San Bruno.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a, maybe another general question I'll see about Councilmember Salazar. So where in the next five years do you see the development, uh, might be, you know, resolved in? So what areas do you see in our community that in the next five years might see more of the development that we're bringing into zoning?
If I have, um, a, a, a ball or a, a crystal ball, I would really see development happening in our TCP area. Along El Camino, San Bruno, this is where developers are calling right now. Um, and we would have to explain to them a long entitlement process. You need to go through ARC, planning commission, twice council because you need to get a PD. A lot of time you're also working on a lot of just, um, entitlement to get a, a development ready. Once the zoning is ready, um, to accommodate these changes, developers will come in and want to populate, um, along San Bruno and El Camino. So they're, they're, they're the TOD development, they're next to transit, um, they're along highway. So that's where I see maybe south of Tampren, north of, um, Crystal Spring, on El Camino and in our downtown.
Yeah, I think the director got that exactly right. And to, uh, Councilmember Hamilton's point, as you get further down and south on El Camino Real. The lots tend to get more narrow, which actually just gives a, it's, it's a physical constraint for development where they're, from a market standpoint, they're just not as likely to, to turn.
Team manager?
Sure, why don't I chime in on, on that? Uh, it's important to note that what we're seeing now, um, as we come out of COVID. Is not a lot of interest in multifamily housing right now. Now, we believe that that will come back where the, where the development interest is right now and the developers that we're talking to, uh, that want to get projects entitled is in office. Uh, because we have the glide path, um, out of COVID-19. And what the office market, uh, is seeing and what we're hearing is that long-term, they're actually projecting more space than fewer space. So the trend over the last 10 years to take people out of the cubicles and have coworking spaces and put people together. Is actually going back to more individualized space and, uh, office developers are actually projecting to see more space. And so right now, uh, there is actually sort of today, more pressure on the office market than we're seeing on the residential market. And so in answering the question, where do we see in five years? Knowing that these projects take sometimes a year to be entitled, a year to get their construction permit and two years to build. If we're simply looking at that five-year horizon, we actually may see more office development in the, in the next five years and, than residential development. If the residential, uh, marketplace doesn't pick up. Uh, and that's a factor of, uh, reduced rents on, on, um, market-based housing right now. And just where, um, the, the type of projects that are being financed.
Okay, thank you. Any more, uh, questions or comments from council at this moment? Okay, so let's circle back to something the vice mayor asked. Yeah, it was more specified, right? So it probably divides it. Cause a lot of this is state oriented, but you were, I don't know if you had something in specific or if I can try to ask Kelly if there are the areas that the city has more local control over. I think that's what your, your point was, uh, Vice Mayor. And, and if those can be tackled one at a time, I think there's maybe three, four, whatever, but, but you. You know best, so, uh, let, let me turn it over to you or Mr. Ackman.
Sure, so I can, um, I think, so I think the two areas that you want to know where you have discretion over are the density bonus and the accessory dwelling unit and junior accessory dwelling unit chapters. So for the density bonus, the areas where the city has discretion are extremely limited. You basically have discretion over what you're requiring your application. How you define maximum allowable residential density. And that's kind of it. Otherwise, the chapter really references state law. For, um, ADUs and junior ADUs, the areas of city discretion, um, include whether or not you'll allow two-story ADUs. So you have to allow a 16-foot height for ADUs, but anything you allow above that, um, is up to, up to you. The city currently allows, I believe, a height limit of 25 feet for two-story ADUs. So we did try to stay consistent with that and to continue allowing two-story ADUs. The next item for ADUs is whether or not, um, the city should allow more than 1,000 square foot, um, ADUs for larger lots. The ordinance does include a provision that allows for a 1,200 square foot ADU for lots over 7,500 square feet. You can choose to require or not require replacement parking for junior ADUs. You can choose to have, um, privacy sensitivity requirements and architectural compatibility requirements. And then lastly was that item that Councilmember Mason asked about, about the review authority, um, for new ADUs that are larger than 800 square foot. Square feet where the primary residence in the ADU do exceed permitted floor area and lot coverage. So I know that's kind of a long, a long list, but I hope that that helps to answer your question.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. And I saw the vice mayor writing quite quickly.
I can show my slide again too, if anyone wants to discuss.
Vice Mayor, does that help kind of break it down a little?
Yeah, that's, that's really helpful. I'm going through that slide and, and, um, some of those are kind of easy for me. That things that we already exist, uh, things that we already allow, um, seems reasonable. The ones that, uh, the parking replacement one for the junior ADU. I think, I think, um. I mean, in some neighborhoods, two or one more car in the neighborhood will create this domino effect of people just scrambling even harder for parking. So, um, let's go, um, if, if we can get some guidance and maybe we can do a, I don't know, a straw poll of like, everybody's cool with that. And get through this then.
You just want to, you're just asking to take bullet, point into bullet point?
Well, unless somebody has something that they really don't like, right? I mean, we have to, there's a lot of things to say yes to here. The, the things that are obvious, that are by the law, you know, I'm saying yes, but the things, at least that's how I feel. I, I don't want to get caught on one thing holding this up. And, and I think requiring replacement parking and maybe there could be some, um, analysis on, on what areas have trouble with the parking. I think I know a lot of those areas, but, um, for the replacement parking of the junior ADUs, I, I think. We should, we should have replacement parking.
Yeah, I, I have on the parking, but, uh, we have Councilmember Hamilton's hand up.
I, I thought that the, the, the current proposal is that, the current requirement is that junior ADUs do require replacement parking. And then with the, and with the regular ADUs, we don't have any option.
Yep, okay.
Require parking. So I think this question is already answered for us.
That's wonderful. Then I'm good. So we are, we are requiring replacement parking for junior ADUs. Okay. And we're going to allow two-story ADUs and so we're already on number four. So we are, we do have privacy requirements.
Yes, and these are consistent, um, within the previous ordinance as well. It's basically things like raising the, the sill height on side facing windows and trying to locate entrances that don't face rear and side property lines where we know that those setbacks are going to be tighter.
Okay. The, the one thing I'll add is that seeing these ordinances up and down the peninsula, really those are the two things that councils focus on the most and that they hear the most concerns from neighbors about is. Where you can, are you providing replacement parking where the city has discretion? And the second is these ADUs are a lot closer to the property lines, especially in the backyards than most of the homes are. Do you have privacy requirements? So those, those two are included in, in the ordinance.
And it's, and it's a four-foot setback?
Four-foot side and rear setbacks. Um, and then if it's an existing structure that they're converting or demolishing and rebuilding, then it just goes where the existing. It does have to meet the building code requirements though and fire safety.
All right, we got through these six already then.
Is there anything else on this slide or I'll stop sharing?
I'm good.
Did, uh, Vice Mayor, did that take care of those, those questions or?
Yeah, I thought there was one more, um, for the large lots, right?
Yes, um, yeah, there's the, there's the option to, um, allow more than 1,000 square feet for an accessory dwelling unit. For large lots, which we're determining as equal to or greater than 7,500 square feet.
And there's a 1,200 square foot allowance for those that are over 7,500 square feet. That's in addition, right? Am I clear on that? I'm sorry.
That's the maximum for the total size of the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
Does that make sense? So not, not 1,200 plus 850, just 1,200 would be the maximum size.
The maximum for, for a lot that has greater than 7,500 square feet.
Through the mayor on that, on that same question?
Please, Councilmember.
Thank you. It's over 7,500. I just want to make sure this is, um, residential and just how many? Cause our standard lot size I thought is about 5,000, maybe 5,200. So, um, how many are we really talking that would fit within that, that mold?
So I, I could take a stab at this. Um, you're right, most of San Bruno was developed, you know, 2,500 to 5,000 square foot, foot lots. As you get in the hills and you go west of 280, you start to see, you know, more of, you know, there's a lot of lots that have strange angles to them, so they may get up to 7,500 square feet. But they are relatively rare and almost exclusively west of the 35. I'm sorry, yeah, west of the 35 is where most of them are.
Are there, uh, questions from council? Uh, council members? Where'd you go? Oh, there you are. Councilmember Salazar, sorry.
Thank you. I, I was, I don't have any questions. I was just going to make a comment that, um, I, I agree, uh, whoever said that, that it's, I think it was Tom who said it's, it's been a long time coming. And, uh, we've been, uh, trying to chase down these, um, these corrections for a while. Unfortunately, the, the bulk of this, everything that's significant in these changes is mandated by the state, so we don't have a lot of discretion in it. It would be nice to have a little bit more flexibility. And, uh, you know, one other thing that's very unfortunate is that we are impacting, um, i- in, in these decisions. The neighborhoods that are already most impacted. And so where there's already most density, probably because of its proximity to transit, we're, uh, going to increase the density. And it's, um, you know, not exactly fair, but, uh, it is what, uh, what makes sense for a lot of reasons in terms of, of having it near transit. And, uh, being that we've already done a lot of work in building out these designs. You know, it is very important that we get all these plans aligned, uh, that we get everything. Basically in a, in a package that, um, that was going to make development possible because that's, that was really the, the purpose of developing the transit corridor plan is to, uh, streamline as much as possible. And this is, um, I believe probably our, our last step in making that all possible. So it's, it's been, uh, you know, over a decade in the making and it's, um. Yeah, I'm glad we're at this point. Uh, I, I'm glad that we're going to be able to make some steps to, take some steps toward, uh, making these projects, um, possible. But, uh, I know that the, the actual process may still be painful, especially for the people that are in the area and that are going to be impacted by these projects going forward. But, um, i- it's worth mentioning again that our hands are tied on most of this and, uh, if, if we, if we want to, if we want to do our shared bill of housing, we're, we're going to have to, uh. Generate those impacts and there's really very, very little we can do to get around it. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for my colleagues? Any other final questions? I'm seeing no hands and I'm not seeing any, uh, virtual or, or other. Okay. This was a public hearing. We had public hearing that was closed. Uh, this is an action item and, uh, just concluding. Obviously this is something that we've wanted to get done, we are getting done and, uh, want to thank you and, um, we'll see how the, the vote goes. Maybe I should hold off my thank you. So this is, uh, there's wave the first reading. Do I have action on that?
I'll make a motion.
We have, uh, Hamilton, Medina, um, roll call please. Roll call please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And, uh, there's, uh, I'd like to introduce the ordinance, please.
I'll make a motion to bring forth the ordinance for approval.
Thank you. Uh, Salazar, Hamilton, roll call please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye. So thank you, thank you all, uh, to the team, staff and, uh, Mr. Ackman. It's, uh, I haven't seen you before the council in quite a while. It brings back memories. But, but thank you for all of your work and thank you for getting it to, to the finish line and, and Emma, thank you and Kelly, um, all of you. Appreciate it very much. And enjoy the rest of your evening.
Mayor Medina, I did just want to note for the public that this action does mean that tomorrow night's council meeting will be canceled.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, uh, we will not be continuing this item. Therefore, there will not be another public hearing which would have, uh, occurred tomorrow. Therefore, the meeting will not be taking place tomorrow.
And we will post a cancellation notice to the website.
Thank you.